Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board meeting of September 13th, 2022. Let the record show that the meeting started promptly at 5:30. I'll read what I'm supposed to read, and we'll get on to our agenda. Pursuant to Governor Baker's July 16th, 2022 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31st, 2023. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in that order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, Conference ID 203-386-491-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business by the chair is to call a role of the board, and Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Shell?
Present.
Mr. Metters?
Present.
And Mr. Castro was online this evening?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Castro, and obviously the chair is present as well. Next order of business, the minutes of September 6th, 2022, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Edits, suggestions, comments? I look to Mr. Castro. I see no hand up there. Anything here? Mr. Shell?
I have two very small nits. These definitely qualify as nits. If you go to page nine, in the first paragraph, under the item identified as C, third line, the word overtime should be separated into two words. And then if you turn over to page 10, the paragraph that begins Dr. Dunkinson, the last full line over on the right where it ends, WUF funds is need, it should be needed. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Corey, do you have something?
Nope.
Okay. Everybody good with those edits? Okay, we had a motion and a second. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
And Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public announcements and/or agenda item requests. I'll look to the board first here for any public announcements, including Mr. Castro out there in virtual land. Any agenda item requests by any board member? Okay. Anybody present that has a public announcement and/or an agenda item request? And anybody online? I see, I believe I see Elaine gives his hand up. Elaine, off to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two agenda item requests. I was unable to attend the August 30 meeting with Verizon and EverSource, but I did watch it and heard no solutions from either side or any indication of what they plan to do to prepare us for winter. So I'm requesting that the DPW report to us about the next steps. Ellen Cummings of Verizon had said, just as one point, that there were only 13 double poles on the Cape, as far as she was aware, and that there were none in Chatham. Nobody challenged that. And so I'm questioning her database and what she's working off of, because there are four between George Ryder and Coral Road. And then there's another one on Sam Ryder, one on Old Queen Anne, one on Old Harbor, and that was for me, just driving around for 15 minutes today in the storm. So she also indicated that they issue a ticket to Verizon within 24 hours of putting in a pole, and supposedly EverSource is supposed to, you know, move their utilities, and then they can go back and remove the pole. Those poles have been there for over a year. So I have real concerns about the fact that EverSource and Verizon say they check these poles every five, seven years for integrity. We've got some that are not. There are other poles, she said, well, they have trusses on them. I've seen poles leaning inwards with the truss on the wrong side. So if they fall, the truss isn't going to help it. So I'm hoping that DPW is, while they're out on the road, that they're looking for these posts now that we know what to look for, and that they're getting the pole numbers. I can't get the pole numbers. I don't, I'm not an emergency vehicle with blinking lights. It's very dangerous to get them, because there are going to be poles that we need to address before the storms. That's agenda item number one. Number two, I would ask that we have an emergency preparedness meeting, again, in preparation for the winter. I think we're in a worse position this year than we were last year. Nauset is no longer going to be a regional shelter. Harwich didn't open last year because they were understaffed. So the closest would be Barnstable. We should have an update on that and how that is going to affect the temporary generator that we have to use at the community center. And I would hope that we establish a policy going forward, I've asked for this for three or four years, and to find a way to keep the community center open if we have another winter like we did last year with sub-zero temperatures and no heat or light for extended periods of time, and communicate that policy ahead of time, because once we lose power, we have no internet, we have no landlines, and we have no cell phones. So we're not getting emergency telephone calls. And my feeling is if the town can declare an emergency ban on private wells in an emergency where potable water is an issue, then we can certainly find some way that we can, on an emergency basis, open up a town building, wherever that might be, that has heat when life is in danger, as I believe it was last winter. So those are my two agenda item requests. Thank you very much.
Okay, Elaine, thank you. I see Mr. Temple has his hand up. Mr. Temple?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Select Board members. Tom Temple, Director of Public Works. To clarify the last speaker's question with respect to 16 utility poles, I think Verizon was trying to say that they only had 16 utility poles that they were ready to move on, because, as you know, they're the last ones on the pole before they can pull the pole. So all the other work has to be done before they can remove the pole. So I think that's what she was trying to say. She only has 16 that she's able to pull at this time, is my understanding.
If I can just interject, the EverSource woman was standing right next to her. And that means EverSource, because they're top of the lines. She should have said, we haven't done our job. We will get out there, and we will move the utilities so that Verizon can come in and do the rest of the work. That was my problem with the two of them standing there and nobody taking responsibility. We can't move the power. Only EverSource can. And we had, EverSource was here on, I think, June 28th, and we've lost two months now, and it turns out it's EverSource's problem. So they need to get with it and get these poles fixed for us, and to check on the ones that, you know, are in jeopardy of snapping again, because there are quite a few, I believe.
So thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Thank you, Elaine. We'll keep it on the agenda. We'll bring it up, you know, every once in a while. We'll keep on EverSource and Verizon. I think the lines of communication are pretty good at this point, and I think both of them know that, you know, we're on it, and that, you know, we've got their attention. So we'll keep it on the agenda moving forward, and we'll keep on them, and Tom will as well. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other folks out there that have anything for the Select Board tonight in terms of an agenda item request? Okay. Here and seeing none online or here, we'll move on here. We have a public hearing this evening on the installation of three new stop signs, Seepine Road and Middle Road, Cove Road and Middle Road, and Woodland Road and Middle Road. And the Traffic Safety Committee has recommended a series of recommendations, or I should say, a series of stop signs at these intersections. And to present this evening, we have Andrew Goddard, Lieutenant Andrew Goddard, who is online right now. Hello, Andrew. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Just to turn my camera there for a second. The Traffic Safety Committee received a request for replacement of two yield signs and turning them into stop signs in that neighborhood, the first being at the intersection of Seepine and Middle Road. Currently, if you're exiting Middle Road onto Seepine, there is a yield sign there. They'd like that replaced with a stop sign. The DPW has also recommended that we place a stop sign, warning sign, ahead of that sign. So advise motorists that there's a stop sign that they're approaching. That roadway, as you come off of Middle and go onto Seepines, is almost a straight shot, and the right-of-way is for Seepine Road coming in from the right. So I think a stop sign there, the traffic committee recommends that a stop sign be placed there to have people come to a full and complete stop before entering that roadway. The second one is on Cove Road, as it intersects with Middle Road. Currently, there is a yield sign there. There have been incidents reported by the people who requested this change of vehicles that just go right through that yield sign and enter Middle Road without stopping. So for safety reasons, the Traffic Safety Committee is recommending the replacement of that yield sign with a stop sign. And the third location is at the other end of Middle Road, where it intersects with Woodland Way. Currently, there is no signage there at all. The intersection there really needs some sort of traffic control, so they're recommending the installation of a third sign there at that location.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant. Any questions or comments from the Select Board, and then the public? Any questions or comments? Yeah, I have none. I would be in favor of all these stop signs and adopt the recommendations of the Traffic Safety Committee. Anybody in the public, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to speak, either here at present or online, please come up to the mic, make sure the button is green, and identify yourself, and do your thing. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Vincent, or Trish. I live at 20 Middle Road, and actually, the end of my driveway is almost directly back from where the, we hope to have a stop sign at Middle and Seepine. I have been in my front yard many times and just gone, oh my gosh, there's going to be a horrendous accident here, and where two cars have narrowly missed each other. My only comment and question is that when the double yellow lines were installed or repainted a number of years ago, the double yellow line on Middle Road goes straight through the intersection with Seepine. And my question is, if we're lucky enough to get the stop signs, and all three stop signs, will those yellow lines that extend beyond the stop line on Middle Road, will they be painted over or however, I don't know how they get rid of the yellow paint lines, but it would seem strange to have a stop sign and then have the yellow line continuing. So that's the question that I have for the board.
Well, thank you, Trish. I, in particular, can't answer that question, because I don't know what they'll do, but I'm sure they'll take care of it so that the stop sign is distinct and that adheres and coheres with how we arrange and array other stop signs in town.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure they'll do a good job.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Yes, sir.
It's Dean.
Hello. My name is John Mantrim. I live on 338 Seepine Road. I'm in favor of the proposal of the three new stop signs. My questions are around implementation details. For example, how will the stop lines be painted? Where exactly will the stop signs go? And where they are, will they permit a clear enough view for the people who are being asked to stop at the sign to actually look over their shoulders and look for the traffic that it is that they're supposed to be waiting for? So mostly, I'm interested in these kind of details, wondering if we might see mockups or proposed placements of the lines and the signs before they are actually installed.
Again, I really don't know whether you can see a mockup before then. I turf it to Lieutenant Goddard and any other members of the Traffic Safety Committee. Again, I'm convinced that they'll do the right thing and do it well. So I would defer to their wisdom. You're here for approval of the stop signs themselves, and we're certainly going to do that. And again, I think we're going to implement them and put them in place, you know, similarly to where we have stop signs elsewhere in town, where there's distinct stops.
Okay, I'll follow up and just point out that some of these are very oblique intersections, more so than you'll find in most cases. So they just warrant special consideration, and I'll just leave that on the record.
In fact, I am really familiar with all three intersections, so, yeah. Anybody else? Shereen, Ms. Davis?
I was just going to say, after the traffic study recommendation, this goes to DPW, and they're the folks that know our roads the best. So I would have to say that they would, they'd do an appropriate job.
So this was a public hearing, and I was remiss in my role as chair to not have our public hearing notice read, and usually the clerk does that. So, Mr. Shell, I hate to put you on the spot, but it's, it is a public hearing notice, and we're doing it in arrears now. Sorry about that.
I think I'm reading the right thing here. Oh, is that it? Okay. Thank you. The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261, George Ryder Road, to consider the placement of new traffic signs, stop signs at the intersection of Middle Road and Seepine Road, the intersection of Middle Road and Cove Road, and the intersection of Middle Road and Woodland Road. The signs are of standard size and style and recommended to the board by the Traffic Safety Committee. All interested parties are encouraged to participate, and that is signed by the entire Select Board. And, Mr. Chairman, I will take half of your lashes for failing to--
No, no, no. It's all on me, Mr. Shell. It's all on me. It's my bad. I should have known. It's a public hearing. Okay. Any other comments from the public, here and/or online? Okay, I'll turn back at the board then, and a motion to approve the three stop signs, please.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Metters, what say you?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well, and thank you very much. Thanks for your input, and I'm sure we'll do it well. If we don't, you'll let us know. Okay, thank you. Our next item on our agenda is the consideration of amendments to water conservation restrictions, including new restrictions to private irrigation wells. This is a standard agenda item we've had ever since we went to some conservation measures early this summer, at the start of the drought. We have had an opinion from Town Council. I know that the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee met lengthily yesterday, and in consideration of both the current water restrictions and looking to the future as well on what further restrictions we might impart, including private wells. So I know Mr. Castro was at that meeting and perhaps would like to comment. And then I think we have some folks here that would like to comment as well. And I'll turn it over to anybody on the board that would like to comment. I know, and my personal feeling is that I need guidance by that committee that we have entrusted to be experts here, and we are lucky and fortunate, I should say, to have Jeff Colby, a DPW director in Yarmouth, as the chair of our Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and frankly, some very strong members that we've appointed recently, and Mr. Hunter and Mr. Bogardis and the rest of the crew. So I'm very much wanting to remand this or refer this to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, if I think that's most circumspect. So we get the full input from that committee before we consider further restrictions on irrigation, private and or public. So with that introductory comment, I'll turf it over to Mr. Castro, has his hand up. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, I attended the committee meeting of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, which ran about three hours. They discussed a number of issues, one of which was the issue of private wells, which they introduced for the first time for consideration. And they had before them the opinion of Town Council, which has been further clarified, I think, in response to requests from Select Board Member Shell. And I encourage them to continue to study this and come back to this board with a recommendation as to whether the town should include private wells in our conservation restrictions. I did make the point, and I see the Town Council is on this, is logged in, but I did point to one phrase, or in Town Council's opinion, because I read the opinion, Town Council concludes that the town has the authority to regulate water conservation or impose water considerations on private wells in certain circumstances where an emergency has been declared, for example. I think his, I read the opinion as preferring that it be done in the form of a bylaw amendment, rather than just based on current statute, which I think he concludes is viable as well. But there is a phrase in the opinion, and I'm going to read this relevant sentence, it's right in the beginning. "I maintain my prior August 26th opinion that the Select Board may legally impose water use restrictions on users of private water systems and wells, as well as public water system users, during declared states of water supply conservation or water supply emergency," and here's the phrase, "to the extent that circumstances warrant such use restrictions to protect the water supply." It seems to me, and Pat could expand on that, I'm reading this to mean that even though the Select Board, as Water and Sewer Commission has the authority to do this, that authority can only be exercised in those circumstances where there is some scientific evidence that the restrictions are necessary. And this goes to the question of what impact private well users have on the availability and supply of water. So am I reading that correctly, Mr. Chairman, if you could ask Pat to comment on that?
Sure. Pat is on. Pat, could you comment on Dean's question and point? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. I do believe certainly that at a minimum, the Board of Selectmen would have to make a declaration of a water supply conservation, or the state through DEP or the governor would have to declare a water supply emergency, in order for the bylaw, as it's drafted, to authorize the board to take the restrictive actions that are noted therein. I think the biggest issue we're facing, and going back and forth on this level of authority that the board has, really relates to the intent of the bylaw. The bylaw was adopted initially, this is Chapter 261, back in 1997. And at that point in time, it did incorporate a definition of water users or water consumers to mean all public and private users of the town's public water system. So that phrase is specifically defined in the bylaw, yet it was only used at one point within the text of the bylaw thereafter, in one of the five restrictions that are enumerated in Section 261 and 5. Here in 2022, we now have a model water restriction bylaw that DEP has promulgated, and that does specifically define those water uses to which the model bylaw would apply, as alternatively, public water supply users only, public and private water users collectively, or private water users. It's up to the local authorities, i.e. the town meeting, in adopting the bylaw to determine specifically what the scope of application would be. So I suggested, in my most recent opinion, that perhaps it would be prudent for the town to take a fresh look at Chapter 261 in light of circumstances that have evolved over the past 25 years since the bylaw was initially adopted, to determine whether an upgrade or an update in language or substantive terms might be appropriate. To Dean's point, as with any regulation, towns are vested with authority by statute and local bylaws to impose restrictions on private property, private property owners to the extent, and I stress that, to the extent that said restrictions ameliorate or remedy a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. So to the extent that any restriction, let's say arguably imposition of a restriction on use of private wells, for example, any restriction would have to, in my view, have some law-- for example, any restriction would have to, in my view, have some logical nexus to the public interest that's being protected by the regulatory action. To the extent that the action adopted by a board exceeds what is reasonably necessary to address the public health, safety, or welfare concerns, it could give rise to a claim of encroachment upon private rights above and beyond that which the bylaw is intended to remedy. So, I do think there is a line, Dean, that is not by any means a bright line. It depends on the specific circumstances. In this particular situation, whatever restrictive measures the board may choose to ultimately adopt and implement would have to have, in my view, some logical or rational nexus to the problem that sought to be resolved. To the extent that it doesn't have a nexus, whether it's scientific, technological, hydrological, then it would just be opening the town up to potential claims for violation of private rights.
If I could have a follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Dean, and then I've got Mr. Shell.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't wish to put anybody on the spot, but there was some discussion yesterday at the Water and Sewer Committee as to what impact private well owners have on the system. And I think, and let me say, I'm a private well owner. I think everybody in town knows that by now, and I don't really care what the result is. I've honored the restrictions that were imposed on the public water uses. Indeed, I went so far as to shut my own system down early. But if it were to be established, if or unable to be established, that private well usage does not have more than a minimal impact on the system, on the use of water, is that a relevant consideration, Pat, for the analysis that you just outlined?
Well, I think the principal statutory basis upon which this type of regulation is premised is the provision of Chapter 40, Section 21A, which is the general police powers of the town. We would be acting within the scope of those general police powers to preserve public health, safety, and welfare by restricting the use of water. Courts have historically interpreted that general police power to be very broad in scope and nature. Accordingly, I think there would be a presumption that the town would be acting appropriately in restricting certain private water uses, should the board choose to pursue that route, based merely on extreme drought conditions that are impacting the town, that could adversely affect not only public potable water supply, but fire suppression systems, things of that nature. I think that the public interest at stake is broad enough to imbue us with an inference of propriety in taking that action. It's not to say that someone couldn't challenge it as being excessive, but I do think we would have a presumption of favor in that respect.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification. That's something. I know there's a member of the Water Committee on this meeting right now, so I'm sure she'll take that information back to the committee. Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Dean and Pat, and off to Mr. Shell.
Thank you. First of all, I just, I don't want to further elongate the legal discussion. I don't really have much to add to that in any event. I'll just say that I think that it's clear from Pat's opinion that this board would have the authority to regulate private waters, private well water use by enacting a bylaw which is approved at town meeting. And I don't think there's any question that would be valid, and it would be a legitimate use of the authority that's granted to us by the home rule provisions that Pat cited. And frankly, I think that's, as a policy matter, a better way to approach this in any event. But I want to come back and just articulate a couple of points that suggest that we're perhaps a little bit putting the cart before the horse by talking about our authority to regulate private well water use. And what I'm talking about is there are really two separate objectives here that we talk about. One is protecting the water supply of the town and the related infrastructure that produces that and holds that water supply in the tanks, and cost that's related to that. And the second thing is the protection of the infrastructure and operational efficiency of the town's system itself. And if you look at those two objectives, private well drilling and building and use actually support those two objectives. And I think we need to take that into account and recognize that, to the extent we're talking about regulating private wells and well use, private well use, we're really, as Dean suggested, focused on the aquifer and the availability of water in the aquifer. And I'm not clear, and I think it's a complex issue, but I'm certainly not clear that that is a, something that needs to be regulated by Chatham in order to make sure that we have enough. And I think until we have some kind of an indication to that effect, that we should proceed very, very gingerly with respect to regulating private well water use.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else on the board? Thoughts? Corey?
No, I agree with all the previous comments from the previous speakers. You know, we move this forward, give some general input, look for a very equitable pathway to do this for the community. My only two cents is, you know, just based on my own personal situation, I do think we have some gaps in the database for private wells, so we need to figure out, and I don't know, it could be a small gap, could be a large gap, I don't know, but it's clear that we do have a little bit of data that we need to fill in to figure out if we were to go down this road and implement any, you know, authority on it. You know, are we capturing 20%, 50%, 75% of the private well users? Because there are some holes in the data right now, unfortunately, which we are working on, and we are getting actually more data as this thing is progressing. So, we can just kind of figure out how to plug those holes, and to the best of our ability, I'd feel more comfortable with this process.
Okay, Corey, thank you. Shereen, Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I'm fine with waiting to hear from the Water and Sewer Commission, and then also to pursue the idea of looking at the bylaw and bring it to town meeting. There's a lot of layers. There's the specific layers that Mike, Select Board Member, Shell-
Oh, Mike.
Mike, had presented, and it makes sense, and same with Dean. I just think that there's a higher level of community buy-in here, that we need to just address that we have an issue of drought conditions, and everybody should just be jumping in to do their best. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. So, yeah, and I agree with all the comments this evening, and I really appreciated Pat's opinion. I think that the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee needs to get Pat's opinion and have access to Pat if needed. We, I think, should ask them to, as part of their master planning, I think, you know, in super drought conditions, if you will, you know, we'd like to have them at least come up with a draft bylaw that, you know, we could present and discuss here. So, we've asked them to do a tall order here, to be honest with you, and they're a newly created committee, very talented committee. Again, we're really lucky to have Jeff Colby as its Chair, but we're asking them to do a lot. But I don't feel comfortable kind of, as a Select Board member, you know, putting on my hydrologist hat, or my engineering hat, to come down hard on this, or come down distinctly on this, without having a lot more science and information involved, to be honest with you. I'm just not comfortable doing it. So, I would like to ask the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, you know, blah, blah, blah. Mr. Shell, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just your mention of the strategic plan that we've asked for, that's a good reference here. I agree with that. I just want to add, as a kind of a coda to my own comments, there is a strain of opinion out here in Chatham to the effect that there's more than adequate supply of water in the aquifer, and what Chatham really ought to be doing is looking to drill more wells, and perhaps add to its storage capacity. I don't have a point of view on that, but I think it is something that we should have data to support or negate before we come down on one side or another of any kind of regulation.
Well said. It's, we've talked about the need for additional wells, or at least the need to explore for additional wells repeatedly. Selectman Nacastro and myself have talked about it repeatedly. And again, I go back to the notion, and again, I'm not a hydrologist nor an engineer, but if we have moments where we have low water alarms going off, should we not have a reservoir somewhere so we correct that low water alarm so we at least have enough water for fire suppression? Because that's my major concern. When those low water alarms go off, we don't have enough money, enough money, enough water for fire suppression. So, and again, I'm not an expert, but we need to lean on experts. And if that committee needs expertise as well, outside expertise, I think we need to support them with that as well. Okay? All right, so let's take that, and let's take that and deliver it to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. You comfortable with that, Dean? Dean, your hand's up.
Yeah, I was going to offer a motion, but I didn't know if you were going to entertain comments from the public first.
Yeah, why don't you move it, and then we'll second it, and then we'll have comments.
Yeah, I think these are all very good comments, and I would point out that on the agenda yesterday, and they did discuss all these items, in addition to the private wells, was the master plan, and also an idea of coming up with a scaled version of water restrictions, water usage restrictions, depending upon the level of drought that's determined. So, I think I will offer the motion that this, the matter of private well, private wells, private irrigation wells be referred to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee for their consideration in the context of their general review of the town's water system, for a report back to the Select Board at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Nacastro. In a second. Thank you, Mr. Metters. Public comment for anybody in the audience here and/or online. Would anybody like to comment? I see Mr. Hosmer getting up.
I guess, Dick Hosmer, I guess this is the appropriate time to bring up, not really a comment on the private wells, but it does apply as well. As we begin to wind down with lawn watering, we are going to start increasing water usage for the winterizing of vessels. And so, I just want to put that out there, that we need to have some feeling of what we are supposed to be doing as citizens, and boat yards, and other people who are going to be flushing motors and pressure washing boat bottoms. I leave it with you.
Well, I know what I think, but I think it's one of our major industries in town, and we need to support it. And if you need to flush your engine in order to winterize your boat so your engine doesn't freeze up and you ruin your entire economy, and you have to do it. And cleaning up a bottom is the same thing. You got to take care of your vessel. Those are my thoughts. So, I'm not, I'm not the be an end-all here, but those are my thoughts. Ms. Davis?
It's a necessity to the business that a boat gets taken care of when it goes into storage or dry dock for the year. I don't know. We haven't weighed in on the boat yards to see. I mean, that's essential, you know, to anybody who does business on the water, or, you know, is to maintain their boats. You cannot leave an unwinterized motor. You lose the motor. So, I just feel that we may want to think about how that fits into the language of our water usage ban that we have imposed.
Yeah. I think it's essential. Mr. Shell?
I have no expertise in this area, but I don't want to be silent and be heard to be thinking other than what you've said. I mean, it makes absolutely no sense to have regulation that destroys people's assets in that fashion. I would agree with your comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Shell. Who do we have online? I see, hands up, I see Dr. Dunkinson. I think that's you, RD?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind the board that, under the current water restrictions that you adopted back on August 11th, that the power washing of boat bottoms is one of the prohibited uses.
Okay.
So, you know, if you're heading in the direction of allowing that, we would need a, you know, we would need a vote, and then we can reissue that for clarity. I would just suggest that, and I'm just suggesting this, that that potentially will open Pandora's box, because obviously, if you approve the washing, the power washing of boat bottoms for winter storage, which, you know, in terms of an essential business function, makes perfect sense, along with flushing motors, I think you may hear from people, well, what's the difference if you can let somebody power wash a boat bottom? What's the difference in terms of power washing the house, or lawn furniture, or whatever? So, I'm just throwing that out there as part of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. I appreciate that, and thanks for the correction on the boat bottom. I had forgotten that fact. I do think there's a distinction between power washing a house and patio furniture and the bottom of a boat that you use to make a living. I do think there's a distinction there. I see Gloria's hand up. Gloria?
Yes, thank you, Gloria Freeman. I want to thank Select Board Member Nacastro for requesting Town Council's opinion on whether the board may regulate private irrigation wells under its water use restrictions. It has been confirmed that you may, and now it's really up to you. One of you said that we are all in this together, it being the drought. It is hard to accept that regulating private wells and water systems would not help in the current drought that we are experiencing, and in future droughts that we might face. Select Board Member Davis noted the, quote, angst, end quote, in the community over this issue. It is a divisive issue, and I hope that you will take some future action to ensure that in a serious or emergency drought, the entire community works together to get us through it. And I too look forward to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Gloria. Ms. Gibbs has her hand up. Elaine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems like the focus tonight has been on the bylaw as it relates to private wells, and that's the primary task of Water and Sewer. I think we have been in a, under a ban of some sort for at least a year, and it looks like this is going to go on indefinitely until we have more storage. The idea that we're going to drill wells tomorrow is not going to happen. It's going to take five years to get new wells. It's going to take three just to fix the ones we have. I had written you all a letter, and with the inconsistencies and the loopholes within the existing ban, and if we're going to move forward on this, that has to be revisited. And I'm a process-oriented person, and there are pragmatic issues that just came to light again tonight, which I find amazing, that you're saying that it's absolutely imperative to winterize boats. You're not, are you talking commercial fishermen, or are you talking pleasure craft as well? Because I got a real problem with that, saying that these are their businesses. Our homes are our businesses, and they are our assets, and we have not taken care of them for the last year. People have mold and moss on their roofs, and it has, our properties have taken a beating. And to say that there are certain groups in town that their boats are more important than our homes, which is- than our homes, which in many cases are our only assets, and we've been doing a good job. But I had laid out and spent a lot of time on it, a three-page document on all the inconsistencies and the loopholes. When you talk about core function, you know, what is a core function of a business? I can't power wash my own roof, but, you know, there are roof, there are power company, washing companies out there that are going around doing it using our water. So it has to be more specific, it has to be consistent, and it has to be equitable. We're the taxpayers, we're the ones that support this town, and it seems to me like everybody, there are certain classes of people that are getting preferential treatment at our expense. And I have said, I went and I did the well because I was told to. And I don't see a sense of urgency about really getting a handle on it outside of private wells. I think it's linked to the survey that's purportedly going out. It's obsolete and it's voluntary. Just by definition, a survey is voluntary. And it says, we don't care if you fill it out online or by mail, we just hope you will. To me, that's a waste of money. It also talks about homeowners who installed, have not installed a meter, that your irrigation system must be disconnected from the municipal water supply and connected to a private well. So now, this is still telling people to go to the private well when we don't even have that issue addressed and go to that expense. So I think that has to be modified. There's no mention of any penalties or fines. It's way too nice. There are people still in violation. In this rain, there were people watering their grass. And there has to be more consistency and there have to be more penalties. And I just can't get over the lack of equity and that nobody's talking about that anymore. We've done our job, water went down, we've got rental properties, three bedrooms with 20 people, nobody's talking about that, that have to be addressed. And we should be doing, that's what we should be focusing on. So I would hope that somebody, and I think that that comes from the select board, you have your staff draft, a new set of regulations, and make sure they're consistent, and that's what you issue. Water and Sewer can deal with those other issues, but something has to come out and it has to be more consistent because we're moving into the winter now and we've got to do stuff so that we're not bringing mold into our houses. And it's not fair that boats can, you know, people are worried about pleasure boats, but not about our homes. Thank you very much.
So Ms. Gibbs, thank you. Ms. Davis has a comment and I'll have one as well.
Yeah, I just, I just want to remind everyone that when we did do the bylaw, we, I mean, did the restrictions, we talked about essential business function, and we did talk about the, the places that have plants for sale and garden vegetables for sale and things whatnot. I think what we need to determine here is, is winterizing your boat and flushing, winterizing your bottom, winterizing your engine and, and power washing the bottom of your boat, is that an essential business function? And that's how I'll pose it to the board.
Well, you know, I think it is an essential business function and it needs to be done. That puts food on the table. Taking mold off your roof does not. So if you want to, want to draw a fine line with some of these issues, I mean, a fisherman needs to winterize his engine and he needs to clean the bottom of his boat, and that's what puts food on his, his or her table. So I think there is a, there's a line there. Elaine, you repeatedly bring, Elaine, you repeatedly bring up very good points that's a lot to unpack all the time, every meeting. We've taken them under advisement, we will continue to do so. You do repeat yourself just about every meeting. Appreciate it, we get it, and we're still working on it. This is not, this is not a simple deal here. It's not like we've dealt with it every day forever. It's complex and it affects everybody. It affects everybody, which we're doing the best we can. Listen, we're doing the best we can, we're doing the best we can to have a bylaw or, excuse me, a regulation that affects everybody fairly. And now we're going to consider seriously private wells as well. But we have a major deal here and a, and a master plan for water in this town, and we're not alone. And it's extremely complex. So we're going to, we're going to march down the, march down the road as best we can. And we've heard you repeatedly and we appreciate your input. Thank you. Carolyn McClellan, I think, has her hand up.
Yes, hello, thank you. Excuse me, I just wanted to chime in a little bit on this. I just think it's preposterous to compare watering lawns with the necessity to manage the fishing fleet and keep that up and running. I think lawn watering is probably the biggest use of our, the biggest use of water that we don't need to use, it's not necessary, it's a, it's an extravagant thing. And just because you can afford a well doesn't mean, I mean, you can do that, but doesn't mean you have a right, you have, it's, it gives you the opportunity to exploit a resource, but that doesn't make it moral to do that when the rest of us are suffering and with the, it's, even though we might not be able to measure the effect exactly, we realize that you, you can't help but look around and think when the whole state's putting a drought issue on, a drought restriction on the entire state, that you can go use your well water and it's not going to have an impact on everybody else. I realize there's a lot of nuances here, but I really think the biggest problem are lawns. And I know everybody loves their lawn, but we really need to look ahead and look at the impact that it has to, to spend all our water resources on something that isn't necessary. We like it, but it's not necessary, it's not healthy for the town long-term, it's not going to be sustainable, and it's a complete waste of our resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Mr. Castro? Dean, you're on mute.
I just wanted to bring up something that I know Elaine Gibbs has, has mentioned a couple of times, and it's been considered, it's under consideration in the town of Orleans. And that is these houses that are rented and you have maybe two or three bedrooms in the summertime, and there are multiple people occupying the house so that people are taking showers all day long. And I know that our Board of Health is, I think, starting to look into that. I think that's really an important factor in terms of assessing public water usage in this town. And I would hope that Dr. Dunkinson would, would pursue that further with our Board, Board of Health, because I think that's an important angle that we need to look at. Because these, these homes are advertised, these rentals are advertised for, you know, 10, 11, 12, maybe 15 bedrooms, and they're really two or three-bedroom homes. So that's a huge stress upon our water usage in the summertime. And I think it's no secret why our water usage has gone down compared to last year and as was reported last week by, by Mr. Temple. So the summer usage is a huge, huge burden on it. I just want to say one thing, and I don't know which way I'm going to come down on private wells ultimately, I'll look to see what the committee has. But people invested significant costs into installing private wells and the, the establishment of a private well took a lot of pressure off the town's infrastructure for water distribution. So that should be kept in mind as well. But there is a motion on the table.
Thank you, Dean. To that, to that point, to that point, at one point, we encouraged the installation of private wells, I recall. And to your other point on, on the rental properties, both you and Ms. Gibbs, Gibbs bring up excellent points, and I think it's a complex problem to unpack as well, to unpack, I should as well. So I know the Board of Health has started, but that's not going to be done overnight either. But to see a four-bedroom house advertising it can sleep 20, there are, I think, there are a variety of ways we can, we can get at on that dynamic, because certainly water use spikes because of it. There's no doubt about it, no doubt in my mind. And Mr. Shell, we do have a motion and a, and a second. Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I, I'd like to ask, I'll vote for the motion as it is, but I'd like to ask Select Board Member Castro if he would entertain an amendment to the motion if this is proper. And, and the amendment, I'm, the focus of your motion is private wells. I think we've, we've heard there are a number of things, whether they're the things that Ms. Gibbs mentioned or what you mentioned, Dean, the summer usage and overpopulation of summer rentals and so forth. I wonder if we could broaden the motion to say that we'd like the, the Sewer and Water Advisory Committee to look at all of these issues and give us a recommendation more generally rather than simply focusing on, on, on private well water use. Not to the exclusion of that, that's included, but include all the other things as well.
I'll not only accept the amendment, I'll second it. I'll just point out that the Water Committee did as well have the communications from both Elaine Gibbs and Gloria Freeman, so they have that information in front of them. In some respect, we have the luxury right now that we're at the end of the summer season.
Right.
So a lot of the private wells are being shut down, they're being winterized. So we have a little bit of time to come up with some more particular and specific recommendations from the committee. I understand that there are some issues that need current address such as the winterization of boats. I think Ms. Gibbs draws an interesting question, puts an interesting question, what do you do about non-commercial boating as well? So I'm not sure what the answer is to that. But yeah, I'm fine with that amendment. Thank you, Mike.
So we have a motion that's been made and seconded, and so I'll ask for a vote. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Sean, are you okay with the motion? You're good? Okay. All right, thank you. Good discussion, thank you very much. Our next items of business are our public, or our business agenda, I should say, and we allow the public to comment on the business agenda forthcoming. We're going to talk about a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. We have a Council on Aging Senior Center rebranding and recommendation, and we're going to have a agenda item on the Fisherman's Storage Area, temporary-permanent location update by Dr. Dunkinson. Are there any comments from the public in any one of those items? We, I will allow comment on the Council on Aging Senior Center item when it's brought forward. Any, any other items? We're going to, in one second, Pat, in one sec. So the first item on our agenda is proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. Entertain a motion to, to, perhaps the clerk ought to read this proclamation, I would believe. What do you think? Mr. Shell?
I would be delighted. Thank you, sir. Whereas September is known as Suicide Prevention Month, a time in which mental health advocates, individuals, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and communities around the country unite to promote suicide prevention awareness. And whereas the past year has presented our communities with challenges and led to transitions that, expected or unexpected, welcomed or not, can be unsettling, disorienting, and stressful. And whereas the pandemic has changed our fabric of life and major life changes our environmental risk factors for suicide, and whereas we know that connecting, working with, and supporting one another can help prepare us for the future, and whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, defined as AFSP, suicide is the 12th leading cause of death among adults and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 20 and 34 in the U.S. And whereas nearly 46,000 people died by suicide across the United States in 2020 with an average of 130 suicides completed daily, and whereas each suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas local organizations like the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. And whereas Chatham, Massachusetts publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas all Barnstable residents are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards reducing suicides. And whereas September is recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Month and provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs for suicide and how to reach out and connect to those experiencing an emotional crisis. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Chatham Select Board, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 as National Suicide Prevention Month in the town of Chatham.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shell. Excellent reading. A motion to proclaim September 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Excellent reading. A motion to proclaim.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Council on Aging Senior Center rebranding and recommendation. We have Leah, I believe, and Pat Burke as well to, to present this evening. Welcome, Pat, welcome Leah, and welcome other members of the council.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You bet.
My name is Pat Burke for the virtual world, who doesn't know who I am. I'm the chairperson of the Chatham Council on Aging. I have the folder, it's, I'm not going to read all this, just so you know. I've been a member of the Council on Aging Board for five years. During the entire time I have been a member, rebranding the senior center has been on our agenda. We've pushed it down the road for five years and during a meeting in the spring, the COA Board decided we would research other Council on Agings and see how they have branded their senior centers. So just so you know, three of us worked diligently and developed a list of names of senior centers in Massachusetts on and off the Cape, in other towns, in cities, in other states. The COA Board of Directors reviewed the list in July and narrowed the list to five names. We decided it was important to discover how the public felt about these names, so we began working with Ryan Dahman, thank you, Ryan, from the town's IT department, to develop an online survey. The survey went live August 1st and was open until August 31st. The poll was on the town website with links from the Council on Aging website and the Friends of the Council on Aging website. The Chronicle announced it, the, it was in the town manager's main sheet. At the same time, for those people who were not able to respond online, we placed boxes with paper surveys strategically at the Council on Aging, at the town annex, at the library, at the town hall, and at the community center. Yesterday, at our Council on Aging Board meeting, we voted unanimously on the name we think which will best help rebrand our Council on Aging. The name that was selected for our new senior center is the Chatham Center for Active Living. Now, you may ask why change the name? Our research has showed us multiple councils on aging moving towards names that will involve more people in the 55 to 70 group, noting the significant resistance particularly among younger seniors to the concept of aging and any reference to them as seniors, elders, aging, et cetera. We still plan to continue to offer the same programs that, some of the programs at the community center as needed, but you know that we need our building, our own building, and we are actively working on finding the best plan and the best size to accommodate all the exciting programs and services that we have to offer. I can tell you briefly that I have been encouraged since I've been on as chairperson with the amount of people within the community that are willing to help us get our new building. It, it's really been a big plus for us. I'd like to be able to present Nancy Fields, our newest board member, who's going to go over the data with you so you can see what we did, how we did it, and where we came. Thank you very much for your time, and we look forward to the day we open the new Chatham Center for Active Living. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Oh, go ahead, yeah. Don't go anywhere without the floor. Hi, I'm Nancy Fields, and I'm going to walk through the packet that you received of materials relating to the rebranding.
He'll take care of you.
So what we're going to see- but these are the parts that I really wanted to walk you through. This is the resolution that we'll talk about later, but this is the slide that really tells the story. So this slide is set up in three parts. This first part, this first part are the electronic responses, the middle part are the paper responses, and then this section is the total of the two. And this is really where we want to focus. Some of the other details, interesting to see the number of people who wanted to reply on paper and that sort of thing, but for our purposes tonight, this is the important part. So as Pat said, the Chatham Center for Active Living is the name we chose, and we had a robust discussion yesterday about this was a survey, this was not a vote. We did not feel that we were required to take the results of the public survey because what we were looking for was input, but in the end, we decided that that was the right thing to do. We all liked the name. So this is kind of the backup for that decision. So you can see, as Pat said, that this Center for Active Living had the most votes of the number one, oh, I should say. So one was your most favorite name, five was your least favorite name. So the Center for Active Living had the most number one indicators, which was actually 30% of the vote, the 80 is 30% of the 262. So, but the way I like to look at this kind of thing is, so one's your most favorite, five's your least favorite. Throw out the threes because those are the ones people really, who cares? And so if we look at the ones and twos together, and then the fours and fives together, the Center for Active Living actually garnered 138 ones and twos, which is over half of the 262. And, you know, if we want to get into why we didn't select some of the others, the numbers are here, but I think in the interest of time, just, you know, noting that this was, to us anyway, the overwhelming favorite among the five names. Any questions before I move on? And then another, in the surveys, both the electronic surveys and online, on paper, there was a section for just free-form responses. So people, we asked for other suggested names or any other comments that people wanted to make. So this slide shows some of the other names, and you can tell that some people were having some fun with it. And in fact, several people in their free-form comments said, you know, let's make this fun. But you can see that there were a lot of interesting suggestions. One thing I would particularly note is to keep the name as the Chatham Senior Center was very popular. A lot of people mentioned that, and you can see that throughout the other names suggested, a lot of people, you know, wanted to keep that word in there, or because that's what people are used to. We're hoping that people can get used to Center for Active Living, but this is kind of where we are today. Now, you also have in your packets, and these are just ones from the paper surveys. These up here are from the electronic surveys. These are from the paper surveys. You also have in your packet two pages of the free-form comments aside from the specific names that I felt was interesting. We thought it was interesting, important to share with you because it gives a feel for kind of where the public, the people who care, you know, the people who took the time to respond to the survey, kind of where they are on the Council on Aging as a whole, on the senior center. Some people mentioned the new building. So if you have time to look through those, I think you'll find them an interesting window into our community. So coming back to, any questions? Okay. Coming back to the resolution, this is the resolution that the Council on Aging Board adopted yesterday, and the significant part for this evening is that because the Select Board has the responsibility for actually changing the name, the Council on Aging Board's resolution was to recommend to you all that the name of the Chatham Senior Center be changed to the Chatham Center for Active Living. So that's what we are asking for this evening. I would also like to, before I step aside, I'd like to thank both the Council on Aging Board and the Friends of the Council on Aging Board for their help through the survey. Several people in particular ran with their tasks and really made a huge impact. I would note Joan Bagnell, who got the Chronicle fired up for us, and you may have noticed, we had two articles. They had an editorial on the name change, and at the same time, they did an interview and a profile on Leah. So Joan did a great job with that. Betty Magnusson, we are in the Historic District in Chatham, so we have to get approval for any sign changes from the Historical District, and I don't know what the proper name is, but Betty has contacted them and we're working with them. And a more operational aspect, as Pat mentioned, we had paper surveys in five different locations. Paula Carroll from the Friends Board went to collect the surveys that were in the boxes throughout the month of August. So I want to particularly thank her for the time and effort, particularly in the middle of summer, going down to the Town Hall and the library and the Community Center. I also wanted to note that the project isn't finished. This is a big part, I mean, this is the start, getting the new name. We still have the signage issue that I mentioned, as well as, we want to have a rollout. We want to make this impactful, and we want to tie it in with, you know, our thinking about a new building. We want to bring more visibility to the Council of Aging and the Center for Active Living so that the community understands where we're coming from, what we do, how we do it, why we do it, and how much space we need to do it properly. So we're not finished, but we are really so much further along than we've been for the last five years, so it's very exciting. If there are no questions for me, I'll turn it over to Leah, and I'm not quite sure where and all of this, she'll do your resolution, but that's what we're asking for this evening.
Thank you, Nancy, and thank you, Pat. Leah, why don't you come up and comment? I'm sure we have comments from the board, and we need to vote too.
Good evening, everybody. For those online who don't know me, my name is Leah Lacrosse, and I'm the newly appointed Director of Community Services for the town. I'm here to speak tonight and speak out in support of the Council on Aging Board of Directors' recommendation to the Select Board to rename our senior center, the Chatham Center for Active Living. In the two short months that I've had the pleasure to be part of Team Chatham, I've heard from many residents and listened to them express their feelings that the existing senior center offerings don't seem to appeal to the younger crowd, the younger generation of older adults, and that the program we offer doesn't quite speak to the wide array of interests of older adults that we have in our town. I know we have had some great programming, we have incredible services, but we could do more, for sure. And to those residents, I wish to say thank you for speaking up, for your feedback, and I want you to know that we're listening. Renaming the senior center to the Chatham Center for Active Living is the first step we can take in this initiative and in our much-needed effort to rebrand our center. Now that we're fully staffed as of today, which I'm very pleased to announce, we can proceed in reopening the center five days a week, effective the first week in October, and begin to provide a wider array of programs and services that speak to the needs and the wants of our residents. Yes, we have a lot more work to do, but we have a whole team now, and we're ready and willing to put in a full effort. I respectfully ask that you support us in taking this important first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Okay. Just quick comment. Great-looking process for how you came up with the name. I think it was very democratic. I like the way you arrayed the votes. A lot of logic there. You guys have been working hard, and really appreciate the presentation and the hard work. I know that Selectman Nacastro is the liaison to the COA, so I'll turf it to you, Mr. Nacastro. Your hand is up, and then I'll turf it to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did attend the meeting of the Council on Aging yesterday, and I can attest that they had a very thoughtful and deliberative process before they arrived at the vote on their resolution. I think their effort, which extended back several years, but intensified over the past several months with Nancy Fields and Pat Burke, with the assistance of Ryan Darman and others, and the other folks that, the other board members that Nancy and Pat mentioned, that this was a very thorough and comprehensive effort. So, and I'd like to just clarify for the benefit of the public that what is being proposed to be changed is not the name of the Council on Aging. That's a term of statute. What is being proposed is to change the name of the building, and if and when we ever, and hopefully we will get a new senior center facility, that name will attach to that particular building. So with that, and I know that other members may want to make some comments, but I would like to throw a note, put a table that the Select Board approve the name change of the Chatham Senior Center to the Chatham Center for Active Living.
That's a motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Second.
Thank you, Shereen. Okay. Any comments from Select Board members here this evening? Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I just would like to, how should I say it, echo what I heard from Pat and Nancy and Leah. My ear is to the ground a little bit on what's going on in terms of your development of programs and interest in going forward with your efforts with respect to a building, et cetera. And I think I can hear some pounding hooves a little bit, and I really endorse that, and I'm excited to see what comes from here. And obviously, I'm very much in support of the name change, which, as the chairman said, I think it went about in a very sensible, methodical way that is beginning to elicit some attention and interest, and I think that's a great thing. So thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. I think you're going to hear the sentiment from the board. Ms. Davis, what say you?
Aye.
And Mr. Shell?
Aye.
And Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to vote in a second, but I do want to also recognize, as I just saw her in the audience, Debbie Mayhew, who was very much involved in collecting this data. Yes, aye.
Yeah, and the chair resoundingly votes aye as well. Great job. Thank you so much, folks. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the Fisherman's Storage Area, the update from Dr. Dunkinson on where we are with respect to draft regulations and the progress on the Fisherman's Storage Area. And I'll recognize Dr. Dunkinson. Evening, Bob, again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So as you're aware, the Fisherman's Storage Area that's currently located at the Chatham Airport has been ordered closed by the FAA. The Airport Commission has been working with town staff on making that happen. We've made several presentations to your board with updates on where things stand, and we'll be doing that again tonight, as well as asking you for a couple of action items, if you will. So as indicated in the memo, we have been working with GHD on the new, or relocated, if you will, Fisherman's Storage Area, which was discussed with the board previously, and is planned to be located off Middle Road on property immediately adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant and the existing cap landfill. And if I can share my screen, I will show you the current state of the design plans for that facility. So up on the screen right now is the current draft for the new Fisherman's Storage Area. This was reviewed with myself and the DPW Director and GHD about a week ago. And basically, it is located off Middle Road. There will be a gated access drive going in, and then there will be three 5,000-square-foot areas, level areas separated by concrete bin blocks, and that's basically blocks that are made by concrete manufacturers with leftover concrete. And so they can be gotten relatively cheaply, and we would use those to demarcate the various areas. One of the advantages of bin blocks is they're relatively easy to move around, so if we wanted to make one area smaller or larger based on the need, that could be easily accomplished. There will also be bin block demarcating the back area so that there can't be expansion into areas where we don't want it to take place. We will make use of the existing fence. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but there is an existing fence around the cap landfill, as well as around the wastewater treatment plant, and we will basically extend those two fences on the east side and the north side and the west to provide for this area being totally fenced in. And then, as I said, there will be a gate at the Middle Road entrance, which will hopefully prevent some of the issues that took place with the existing area with illegal dumping. And so GHD has pretty well finalized this plan, and as you can see on the profiles on the side, there is minimal grading involved. So it really will just be clearing the trees, minimal grading, and then putting down a drivable surface and a storable surface, if you will. And we're probably going to bid this with two options. One would be hardening, and then one would be crush shells. Obviously, the road will be some type of hardening, but the storage areas themselves may turn out to be that we can use, say, a crush shell for the surface there and hopefully reduce cost. And then just today, we were provided by GHD a draft of the DEP permit that needs to be submitted, and that's one of the reasons why this has taken a little bit longer than we anticipated, was just getting clarity from DEP as to exactly what permit they wanted to apply for, because even though this area will not affect the landfill cap, it is still on the same property with the cap landfill, and therefore needs to be DEP permitted. They have about six different types of permits for projects on property with landfill, with cap landfills, and it took DEP a little bit of time to determine exactly which permit they wanted us to file for. But that has now been decided, and so GHD sent over the draft permit late this afternoon. We will review that, get any comments back to DEP and then to GHD, and then they will formally file that with DEP. And we're hoping for a relatively quick turnaround time, probably on the order of 30 to 45 days. Once we've received DEP's approval, we could then put this out to bid and get some accurate pricing. And as you know, Town Meeting last spring did appropriate $200,000 for this project. We've spent some amount of that money on the engineering, and the rest of it would be available for construction. And, you know, once we get the bids back, we will obviously be coming back to the board to review those bids with you and get your concurrence on moving forward. So that's where we are on the relocation of the facility. Now, recognizing that that is going to take some time, and that as of September 1, the Airport Commission has locked the gate to the existing area, which has caused some issues with fishermen being able to get in there and, you know, do the things they need to do, as well as store their material. To follow up on that, back in August, we had To follow up on that, back in August, we had the Harbor Master send out an email to all the current users, or those that have current permits, they may or may not be actually using it, but had permits to use the facility, indicating that we were gonna look at a temporary location until the more permanent relocated facility could be built. And from that, we received three responses from three current users indicating what they plan to store and roughly the amount of area that they would need. And so, we've taken a look at the wastewater treatment facility, and I'm gonna throw another plan here up on the screen. This is the site plan of the current wastewater treatment facility, and we've identified three locations at that area where we could provide temporary storage until a more permanent facility is built, if that is the ultimate decision to go ahead and do that. And I've got photographs of the first one of these areas. We're calling Area 1, just to be able to identify them, and that is an area that's adjacent to the orbital reactor and near the secondary clarifier diversion structure. And I'll show you pictures of these just quickly here. Area 2 is a location right across the road, and it is the site of a future secondary clarifier that probably wouldn't be needed for another 10 years or so. But that area is already flat and level. And then, the third area, Area 3, is a large area that is right next to the electrical building, and again, is not programmed for any potential use going forward. There is a large, flat area to the right here, before you get to Middle Road, but we're currently using that area as a storage yard for the various contractors that are working on various wastewater projects. They store pipe there, they store stone there, so this was not a good area to also try to do the fisherman's storage. And so, quickly, let me just show you some photographs of these areas. This area shown in the photograph is Area 1. You can see the orbital reactor, you can see the diversion structure on the right-hand side, but there is a fairly significant flat area that would be available to store fishermen's gear. Area 2, as I indicated, was right across from that, and it is the location of a potential future third secondary clarifier. And again, you can see it's a flat area, there are paved access roads, there's no need to remove any vegetation, because these areas are already flat and grassed. And then, the third area is this area here, as I said, just on the left-hand side, you can see the electrical building. This is really the largest of the three areas, and again, it's easily accessible with paved road around it. It's flat and it's grassed. So, all three of these areas are suitable for storing the facilities. I have spoken with the chief plant operator at the wastewater treatment plant, and he said the use of these areas for fisherman's storage would not pose any operational impediments to the wastewater treatment facility operations, that they're basically wide-open areas now, and they're not being used for anything else. So, these could be used in the coming months for temporary location, recognizing that, you know, the Airport Commission wants the existing material removed from the current site as soon as possible, but we do have a couple of fishermen, mainly lobstermen, who are looking for a temporary place to store. You know, we have one who's asking for a place to store upwards of 800 lobster pods, so you can imagine that takes up a fair amount of area. So, that's the first part of the equation. The second part is regulations for that area, and we included in your packet some temporary fisherman's storage area regulations, and these were basically adopted from the Airport Commission's regulations. We did make, I did make one change this afternoon that was sent out to the board based on some conversations that took place with Town Council at the end of last week, and we decided it was important, because the wastewater treatment facility will only be accessible basically during working hours, so from 8 to 3, Monday through Friday, we thought that was important to put as part of the regulations, so that everybody was clear, because it is a controlled site and is fenced and limited access. We felt it important to put that in the regulation, so I did add that, sent that around earlier today to the board. That was really the only change that was made to what has been included in your packet. I did remove Number 10, which was shown as a strikeout in your packet, as well as Number 12, because they're not really germane to this site, if you will, because we're not gonna have a waiting list here. We're only doing this for existing permit holders who need a temporary place to store material that they currently have over at the airport site. And then, the third item that we did include in your packet as well, and this grew out of discussions with the Town Manager, as well as Town Council, unlike the existing area, which really just kind of grew up over time and, you know, had very little formal oversight and notice, if you will, this new area will require a license from the town. And so, we did include as part of the packet a draft license agreement that we received from Town Council, which basically sets forth, you know, criteria for use of this area and provides the legal basis for doing so, that, you know, anybody using this area would have to sign off on, to be able to use it. And so, with that, I completed what I wanted to present to you. So, we are looking for you tonight to basically authorize contacting the three individuals that have indicated they need a temporary, if you will, storage area, indicating that we have identified these locations, meeting with them out on the site to, you know, talk with them about it, and hopefully, you know, be able to assign those three individuals to one of the three sites at the wastewater treatment plant on a temporary basis, and then also have you adopt and provide any comments that you may have on the proposed regulations. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bob, for that summary. Very complete. Mr. Metters, who has raised this issue repeatedly and has stayed on top of this issue for the fishermen, for the town, Mr. Metters?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just bear with me for a little while here. So, we have two very distinct topics. One is the temporary fishing and storage, which we're offering, which has now been determined, three current tenants to use while the new FSA is being constructed. And then, the new Fisherman's Storage Project, which we're gonna have to determine, obviously, market rate values and process and everything else. So, that, I'm thrilled that we're moving forward with. It seems like we only need to have three spaces. We have a decent plan in place with that, and I'm very happy with that and its timetable and its timetable. But the temporary fisherman's storage process I got involved with several months ago, well, probably about a year ago, I've never been more frustrated, I've never been more discouraged, I've never been more upset at the process of how this has happened. And I'm just gonna vent for a little bit, because we, for some reason, we weren't communicating very well with all parties, with staff, with the Town Manager, with the tenants. We seem to, I seem to be having communications with different parties and different answers were being told to me, which got me very frustrated, because this really should have been a very straightforward process. It probably should have been handled months ago. You know, we took a long time trying to figure out how many existing tenants needed the ability to use a temporary location. You know, and all said and done, we got three. We figured out what they needed for our space, and various communications went out, but you had letters. At one point in time, we're trying to figure out what the fees were gonna be. Lo and behold, no fees were collected for this past season, because at one point, the thought was that they would all be vacated from the current FSA back in June. Okay? So, now we're looking forward, what is the appropriate fee structure to move forward for the temporary location? And, you know, the $600 amount came up, and I think that's more than fair. I think it's a bargain, really, for temporary storage. I think that's more than equitable and everything. That's fine. But, we went back and forth about when we were going to verify a temporary location was gonna be available, and some of the letters that were sent out, you know, gave a deadline of August 26th to kind of give the notice to the town, "All right, you wanna use this ability? What kind of square footage do you need? What kind of gear are you gonna fill?" And then, other letters coming out at the September 1 deadline, that the gate's gonna be closed. That's, you know, the Airport Commission's gonna shut it down. And during this whole process, we were going to consistently, there was a tone that I believed, that we were gonna work with the fishermen that had communicated, had stepped forth, said, "Yes, we need help." And unfortunately, you know, with that September 1 deadline came, we locked the gate, we didn't have a verified site, but we're still working on the process now. So, the goal really was to get the existing FSA cleared out to a new location. We kind of tied our hands with that process. And then, and I didn't learn this until I read this report over the weekend, that the, on September 7, the Airport Commission Chair notified FAA that the area was closed and the cleanup will begin soon. Well, I kind of disagree with that, because there's still equipment there from current tenants that need to come over. So, I really wish we had been more efficient with our process, because I'm frustrated that we have three, you know, thank God we only have three individuals we're dealing with now, trying to get them access to their current equipment, getting them over there, being clear of what we're offering them. And where I'm getting frustrated in the process is, okay, so, we're gonna go through all this, and we've last-minute decisions, getting it to the current site. When the new site is constructed, I think we need to be very clear of, okay, this is the process, because there's only gonna be so many spots, and it's not guaranteed that the temporary tenants are gonna be the ones that are gonna get the new site. It's gonna be market value, which we need to determine, and there's other criteria that we're gonna have to be very transparent about to figure out who these spots are gonna be used by. So, I really hope that we can be as clear and efficient that we have not been during the, for the temporary storage, for the permanent storage, because frankly, I kept getting texts from different tenants saying, "Hey, gate's closed." Okay, we're gonna work with the tenants. That's wonderful. And then, I went to the Town Manager, I'm like, you know, get a little bit frustrated. Okay, so tell me, who's the point person on this? Huntley Harrison, Airport Chairman. With due respect, he's got authority on the Airport Commission, but he shouldn't be the point person for a project going into town property. So, I do think we lost, we dropped the ball a little bit on this one. I do hope we can get it to work out for the benefit of the three, you know, individuals who are looking to use this temporary location. I think it's a good asset for the town to help them out. I think it's a good community field to be doing it. But I do want to be able to also be very crystal clear, the new permanent FSA that's being built, Town Meeting voted on it, what exactly are we offering them? What are the clear details? I think, you know, I think the licensing agreement on this, pretty much fair. We want to protect our interests, but I do think we need to put this out and figure out if that's gonna be amenable to whomever. So, I appreciate you allowing me to vent. I wanted the entire board to be part of this process, because I've been dealing with a lot of it one-on-one with staff and Town Manager and, you know, and, you know, my fellow board members aren't aware of what's been going on, and I want them to have the opportunity to weigh in, think I'm overreacting, underreacting, or any thoughts. I had a brief conversation with Mike as, you know, Airport Commission Chairman when I made this request a week or so ago, so I could kind of give him a little bit of background. I think we agreed very much on the kind of philosophically where I was going with this, but I would very much like the input from the board, and I would answer any questions you guys would have of me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Corey, and thanks for keeping on top of the issue. I know that folks have been communicating with you, and you've been close to it, and I understand your frustration. I understand. Ms. Davis, you have your hand up?
I do. I just, just to clarify some things that I was hearing from Corey, the timing communications was a little problematic. In leading to that, in hearing that, you know, the point contact was Chair Harrison, and I did read some of his emails, and some of his tone was a bit abrupt, and I did get texts from a couple of the fishermen, very frustrated by the process. So, I guess the solution for me is to find out who, for the temporary shelter, and then to move forward, who's the point of contact for communicating the process and the management of the temporary shelter? Is it the Town Manager, the Harbor Master, or the Natural Resource Director? And is, you know, and we need to define that, or get, find out from Jill who that is, so that we have a better understanding of who is going to be directly responsible for the communications to everybody and then the actions around it.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Shell?
Yeah, I, first of all, thank you, Corey, for overseeing this and taking the bullets, if you will, over that long period of time. I did go out, and as part of my broader orientation to survey the entire airport, I did survey the area where all this, this material is stored. I think it's worth, at least my perception was, that there's kind of a combination of things there, some of which clearly is fishermen's equipment that looks like it's regularly used, but some of it looks a little bit more like it's been there for a long time, and it's kind of a convenient place to deal with something that somebody perhaps doesn't know what else to do with it. And actually, that does raise one of the questions that I have for staff with respect to the regulations. There are, as I recall, and I have pictures, but I don't, I didn't have a chance to look at them, but there are, for sure, boat trailers. There may be a boat or two out there. There are also a vehicle of one sort or another out there, and I noticed that the regulations prohibit those from use in the temporary area. I'm hoping that the people who've asked for assistance with a temporary storage area don't have any of those, and if that's the case, then I can drop my question with respect to that.
Mr. Metters?
I believe the responses, you know, obviously, one of the lobstermen responded. The only thing close to a trailer was one of them responded with a trailer, I believe, and there was a certain dimensional trailer, but I think the ones that you're concerned about aren't listed in the responses from the three current tenants that want to use the temporary site, so they would not apply. So, I think to answer your question, I think those have been excluded.
Thank you, Corey. Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, staff worked diligently to try to find a solution, and I think what you have presented before you took a lot of time and a lot of effort to try to get here, and in a really unusual circumstance of having private property owners using town property. And so, I think what you have tonight are a few options. Moving forward, it will be the Department of Natural Resources. It's on our property, the plant. I'm really concerned, and I want to make sure that staff is actively involved, that there's no damage to the facility, that we invested so much money there, and, or so much funds, and that there's safe access and access for the permit holders. So, I think what we have before you is a really good solution, and I think some of the miscommunications and/or non-communications, you know, I certainly can apologize for that. It just was, you know, three different, almost the governance conversation of who having control over the site. So, I think we, moving forward, we've definitely resolved it, but certainly will take responsibility for the challenges, especially the three permit holders had, and how, having limited access to their equipment, I can understand how disconcerting it is if this is their livelihood. So, moving forward. So, it'll be Director of Natural Resources, Bob, I'm gonna have you as the primary. Certainly, we can delegate it to others. As it relates to the existing site, the Airport Commission Chair, the Airport Manager, and DPW has a key to that gate. We were able to get it open, I think it was Friday of last week, to give the person access who wasn't able to get access, so I think we're gonna work through that. And then, with regard to the permit fee, just decided to keep it level funded at $600, at $600 for the temporary site because that's what, uh, the permit holders had been paying previously. And right moving forward for the permanent site, um, it, we have procurement laws that require us to charge a, a market rate and determine what that fair market rate is, and then, uh, possibly solicit proposals for that. So, uh, we'll work through that process, and I think that could definitely be done, uh, before the permanent site comes to you for recommendation to move forward. And then the license agreement, um, is something that's pretty typical. Uh, we've done it with the, um, the Weir Pole storages. It's this storage, it was the same type of agreement. The only thing I saw in here that we probably have to have some further discussion is the insurance requirement, because I'm not really sure that the permit holders are going to be able to get insurance. So, uh, we'll have to work through if there's some kind of waiver that can be signed. But I, I appreciate the, the action of, um, Vice Chair Metters bringing it to our attention. And, uh, I, I, I know it's chaos, but I, I can see moving forward that we're going to have a plan and, and hopefully address it.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Metters, and then off to Mr. Nacastro.
Just one, uh, question on, um, process. Once we get the temporary site stamped, ready to go, we, we know the hours of oper, uh, accessibility to them. I believe there's still equipment from the tenant, or the three tenants that are at the current location. Has there been any conversation? Because I know, well, according to, you know, the, the airport chair, uh, chair, it's been shut down. But, uh, are we going to, uh, kind of agree on a reasonable timetable that, okay, new site's going to be prepared, you've got X amount of time to, to relocate stuff from point A to point B? That way, we can totally close the check, the books on the existing site. Um, you know, obviously, there's going to be some, it was, they don't have 24/7 accessibility, but has there been any conversation with any of them to figure out, okay, what is a reasonable amount of time to get this transition complete?
So, I can defer that to Dr. Bob. I'm not sure if Stuart was on the meeting. He had some direct conversations. But the Airport Commission Chair, Huntley Harrison, had said that, uh, throughout September, he was willing to work with the, the permit holders to get their items moved. It's just, I think Bob can answer the question better than I can. When do we expect the temporary location to be available? Is it, you know, as soon as tomorrow, or does it take some, some effort? I think Bob can speak to that.
Yeah, the, the temporary facility is ready to go. Um, we, we can start moving stuff over tomorrow. Um, and that's why my first recommendation to you was to, to have us engage with the three individuals that have indicated the need as quickly as possible. Have them look at the sites, determine which one, you know, may work best for them, and then frankly, they can start moving stuff over immediately. Um, because like I say, these sites are already flat, they're cleared, they're grassed, they're adjacent to, you know, a paved roadway. So, there's no issue starting to utilize the, the temporary sites as soon as necessary.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Uh, Dean Nacastro, Selectman Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I do have a few questions about the documents and the, I, I do want to say first, uh, thank, I thank Mr. Metters and Jill for their comments. Corey has kind of kept me up to date from time to time on what's been going on from his perspective. And I think that going forward, um, the identifying of Dr. Dunkinson as the, as the town point person makes a lot of sense. So, hopefully, the, um, the difficulties and the frustrations that, that Corey talked about will be erased in the future. I'm very confident of that. I also think that the whole process of getting this, uh, the, these, um, of closing down the, um, air, the location at the airport makes a whole lot of sense. It was extremely informal over there over the years, and now we're going to have a very tight, um, location, tightly managed and, um, and enclosed location, uh, and, uh, it'll be, uh, a lot better for the town. I did want to make sure, Bob, first of all, is the license agreement, is that something that is going to apply to the temporary storage or just the, the permanent storage going forward for them?
Uh, it would apply to, to the temporary storage as well as the permanent. Yes.
Okay. So, I know that it's terminable, um, under paragraph 10, at any time on a 30-day notice. Um, is, is that, is that something, is this document something you're asking us to approve as well, this form of license? Or is that something that the town manager is going to do on her own? And maybe Jill has to respond to that on her own initiative. Do you want our approval tonight on this document?
Um, in terms of license agreement, this is a draft from Town Council. Um, it's set up for the town manager's signature because that is, as the town manager indicated, that's historically who has signed off on license agreements. And then Jill, I'm sure can weigh in further on that.
Go ahead, Jill.
Yeah, so typically with a first license agreement, we bring it to the select board so that you can provide input. And then, uh, I don't necessarily need a vote, but if the board wants to vote to authorize me to enter into the license agreement or, or, or sign the license agreement, we can certainly do it. Um, this tonight, I, I believe it was fashioned for just the temporary location, not for the permanent location. So, um, we could differentiate that within the license itself.
Uh, well, thank you. I appreciate those comments from both of you. And I would, just as one board member, would defer to the town manager and the town council and Dr. Dunkinson on the appropriate form of the licensing agreement because obviously, this is probably going to be fine tuned a little bit, including with respect to the license fee. But I did want to comment on the, uh, and Jill mentioned the insurance provision. And this goes to a question, um, that I had about the temporary storage area number two because, Dr. Dunkinson, you, you mentioned that that is an area that, that's a location that in about 10 years' time, we might have to put, I think what you called a secondary reactor?
Secondary clarifier.
Clarifier. So, is, is it important? I, I toured that facility, as you, you might recall, in the rain, a couple of years, a few years ago with Larry Sampson. We got drenched, but we had a wonderful tour of the whole facility, and I commend that to anybody in this town. Um, is, is there any potential that if, if this is not managed properly, that inappropriate, um, materials would be placed there and leak into the, leak, um, pollution into the ground such that it would injure or damage the potential for future use of, for that area too, or any of the other, either of the other two areas? So, I'm, I'm just concerned about that. And, and, and I, I guess this goes more deeply to the question of management and control over what folks do. Uh, do we want to have, um, a 30-day termination period or an immediate termination right on the part of the town? Do we really, you know, do we want to, you know, push a little harder on insurance? Or, or, uh, the indemnification provision looks okay. But I just want to make sure we're not, I, I know that's going to be enclosed and locked a lot better than the, what was at the airport. Um, but, uh, I just want to make sure we're, we're taking, we're, we're doing everything we need to do to, um, protect ourselves.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, there's two issues that I see. One is the temporary facility at the wastewater treatment plant, and then one is hopefully the more permanent facility over off Middle Road. Um, obviously, I have a vested interest in making sure that nothing happens that would be injur, injurious to the wastewater treatment facility site. Um, I'm actually thinking that site number two, which is near the existing secondary clarifiers and potentially, you know, is where the third one would go, um, that to me would be a good spot to park the one trailer that's been indicated. You know, they have a net trailer, basically, so it'll be a trailer on wheels. It's relatively small. I think it's 20 by 20, something like that. Um, to me, that's a perfect spot to store that and then use the other two areas that are larger, um, to store the lobster pots. You know, one of the individuals indicated 850 lobster pots. Um, you know, that needs a fairly larger, uh, you know, rectangle, if you will, to, to store them efficiently. The other advantage that the wastewater treatment plant site has is it's highly visible. There are staff there every day, um, that are working there that, and I, you know, this was part of the conversation that I had with the chief operator, that if they see anything that doesn't look right, they will notify us immediately, um, as opposed to the, you know, the existing site that's, you know, kind of out in the woods by itself and nobody's ever there except when they're there working. Uh, so I think that's one advantage that WPCF site has is it's highly visible, there's people there on a, you know, daily basis, uh, it's inside a fenced locked area. So, you know, immediately and as indicated in the regulations, the users have to provide us a list of what they're going to store, and the regulations are very clear on what can't be stored there. Now, you know, those are pretty much word for word, the same regulations that apply at the existing area at the, at the airport. However, the airport site didn't have the oversight, um, you know, over the decades. Uh, you know, it really started out as kind of an ad hoc thing, um, and so, you know, that's the way it was kind of treated. It wasn't fenced, it wasn't gated. So, you know, we know there were instances of illegal dumping, um, that took place by some of the permit holders, but also, also by other, potentially other members of the public. Um, you know, so we're trying to address those issues as best we can with the temporary site and with the new, quote, permanent site.
Thank you. I just would sum up by saying that for all the challenges that, you know, were, have led up to where we are now on this, um, as has been, as has been men, have been mentioned, I really do think that the, the solution that you have, you and, and the town manager and the harbor master, um, working with the Airport Commission, and I, I credit Selectman Metters considerably on this as well for his input, have come up, come up with a, a very creative and positive solution here. I think it's a great development for the town. Um, and I think it's important to support our fishing industry. It's also equally important that we recognize that the town is spending a couple of hundred thousand dollars on this and that the taxpayers are ponying up this money. So, that, that needs to be credited as well. Um, so with that in mind, uh, and there may be some more discussion, it sounds like you want to have the board approve the use and assignment of the temporary locations that you've laid out, uh, as well as to adopt the regulations that you have proposed. It seems to me those are the two votes you need from the board, Bob?
Yes.
So, I, I offer a motion for those purposes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nacastro. Uh, a second to that, please.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Shell, and I've got a comment as well.
Yeah, uh, just, uh, and this is really a very technical question, then I have a comment, um, about the, the cleanup part of this. Um, it, item 10 of the regulations just talks about a $600 annual fee, and, and I don't, I, I, maybe this falls within the discretion of staff to manage it i- in more detail. But I, I did want to ask whether you contemplate that, um, that might be segmented down into a, a smaller port, for example, if somebody, um, only needs it for six months, or, or they want to leave after six months of a year or whatever, um, whether you would contemplate, uh, allowing them to, uh, to have a credit for whatever portion they didn't use it.
Mr. Met, Mr. Metters?
I'm, I'm just going to weigh in on this, and probably the tenants would probably be like, oh, great, give me a break. But, um, I think $600 is a very reasonable fee. They have not paid anything for the summer. So, they've got the benefit of June, July, August, September, well, into September, um, with, uh, with an extension of their previous fee. Um, so I think $600 for the temporary site, I, I frankly think it's rea, I've been trying to help these folks out for a while. I think it's very reasonable, um, and, you know.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I, I was really looking for a clarification for the whole program. I, I'm fine with that.
And the $600 is basically the, the fee they had paid the previous year, which is kind of just roll over the same amount. So, that was, that was the thing.
So, the, the, the comment I'd like to make here is that, um, appropriately, the focus is on the move to temporary space and then ultimately the permanent space. You've got three people who want it. Um, having been out there, uh, and looked around and, 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 uh, Dr. Dunkinson referred to, uh, what appears to me to have occurred, which is what he called illegal dumping, um, somebody is going to need to attend to and administer and perhaps give a nudge here and there to get the cleanup of the non-transferring, um, uh, material or, or equipment, uh, moved off of the site. And I, I, is that, is that going to be DPW or is that going to be whom? I, I, I think we need to focus on that. At the same time that I say that needs attention, uh, I'd like to manage folks' expectations that it, it is not, I don't think, uh, unless there's a miracle, going to be an instantaneous process, so.
Thank you, Michael. I think you bring up an excellent point. I just would reiterate and echo the sentiments of my fellow select board members that, I think going forward, we have a good plan for both temporary and permanent storage. I did write down, what is the mechanism for post 9:30 cleanup of that area? Because I don't believe that by some miracle, as you just said, that it's going to be miraculously cleared. At the last time, I've been up there a while, but the last time I was up there, it was a mess. And it was a dumping ground, and there's a lot of cleanup to do. So, I think it is important for, um, our management to, to think about what we're going to do when the place isn't cleaned up by September 30th. Because there's a lot of stuff up there that, so who's going to clean it up? What's the mechanism going to be? Who's going to pay for it? Do we know whose stuff it is or isn't? I mean, so, you know, and end game here, we hope to avoid anything like this going forward. So, and then in the new area, we don't want, we don't ever want to have the conversation about whose stuff it is and who's responsible for cleaning up, et cetera. But anyway, I do think we have a mess on our hands post 9:30 unless by some miracle, folks get up there and clean it up. And Jill, what are your thoughts?
Sure. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, I, I, I believe DPW would be the point on that. So, we were hoping to get the, the permitees to the new location and then assess whether we can do it in-house, if there's, um, items for us to presumably clean up, which I'm sure there will be, or if we need a contractor. Um, I guess I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Bob if you had any further discussions with Tom, but if not, we'll get that straightened out this week.
Yeah, there, there have been some discussions because DPW has been involved in previous cleanups at the site. Um, you know, over the last two decades, there, the last decade, there's been at least two, well, times where DPW did bring up, you know, the big metal containers, and material was segregated into that, you know, metal and wood and whatnot, and then disposed of through the transfer station. So, we envisioned, uh, the same kind of thing. We've also looked at potentially using AmeriCorps, uh, help, uh, to do that, you know, to help out. Um, but, you know, until, and, and, you know, I think it's important to say, technically, there was a June 30th date, a deadline, to get all the stuff out of there. So, I think it's safe to say that anything that isn't moved out to the temporary site over the next couple of weeks is not going to be removed. Um, and it's going to fall to the town and the Airport Commission, um, to foot the bill for that cleanup. But we're trying to do as much of it as we can, um, in, in-house. As you know, we had a hazardous materials, uh, survey done last spring, which luckily did not identify any major issues there. So, I think it's just a question of getting, you know, DPW's heavy equipment and, and dumpsters down there, getting the stuff thrown in it and hauled away. So, hopefully, it doesn't, you know, turn into a major, um, you know, operation.
Okay. Okay. Um, any further comments? We had a, did, Dean, did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
And was it seconded? Mr. Shell seconded? Okay. So, a vote. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And thank you, Corey, for all your hard work. Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well.